Thinking to order, I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussi.
That's what I did all the time. Present. All right, there's a public comment. Is there any public comment? Anybody have anything to say? Kevin, anything back there? Anybody want to say, have anything to say? Okay, is anyone, is anyone in the, online have a, something they'd like to add or say?
No.
No? Okay, well, move forward then. We're go to the consent agenda. That's authorization of payroll and bills, the supervisors, information on social services, employment center, food pantry, transportation, and financials, and then three resolutions, which you've all sort of should have seen and been able to go through. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I make the motion?
Second? Any second?
Second.
Okay.
Who was the second?
Who was the second?
Dick.
Dick. All right, if I have a roll call vote.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye.
All right, so once we approve the resolutions, now I can actually use them.
If I can have Art, please come on up.
Stand over here. We have a resolution here, Resolution 2021-06. This is Art Nierdowski, recognition of excellent service. Whereas Arthur Nierdowski has diligently and proficiently served the residents of Elk Grove Township as Highway Commissioner for eight years, whereas he consistently fulfilled his supervisory responsibilities as Highway Commissioner in the most professional manner, ensuring that his employees and contractors always met the highest standards of performance and customer service, and whereas he exhibited an exemplary willingness to step in and personally work alongside his team to make certain that services such as snow plowing, branch removal, and road repairs were provided in the most timely and highly, in a high-quality manner. Whereas he expertly managed and kept at peak levels of efficiency a highway department with multiple pieces of high-cost equipment, stocks of supplies with unpredictable demand patterns, and a quarter-million-dollar operating budget, and whereas he consistently worked to strengthen relationships with the residents of unincorporated Elk Grove Township in order to better understand their needs, improve services, and ensure that every resident's voice was heard. And whereas he organized, implemented, and oversaw a massive road repaving and repairing program for all of the roads in unincorporated Elk Grove Township, which resulted in massive savings and will significantly reduce the cost of maintenance on the roads for the next 10 to 15 years, and whereas he diligently worked to keep all township officials and staff apprised of the ongoing activities of the Highway Department and understood the importance of working as one township unit to better serve the community. Now therefore Supervisor George K. Bussi and the Elk Grove Township Board do hereby recognize and extend their deepest appreciation to Arthur Nierdowski for his years of faithful service to Elk Grove Township Highway as Elk Grove Township Highway Commissioner. The Board thanks him for his great dedication, energy, and commitment to the township and its residents.
All right. All right. The Board have anything they want to say?
I agree.
Thank you for your service.
We really appreciate all the years of service, and we really, the thing that I thought stood out is that you're willing to go out there and work alongside your guys when it was necessary, and you didn't just sit in an office, you actually were a working Highway Commissioner. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Bob, where's Bob? There's Bob. Come on up here. How are you doing?
I'm good.
Hey, I'm right there with you. All right, so this is Resolution 21, 2021-05, and that's Robert Ingraffia, recognition of superior service. Whereas Robert Ingraffia faithfully served the residents of Elk Grove Township as a trustee for six years, and whereas he consistently exhibited an unparalleled commitment to ensuring that Elk Grove Township excelled as a governmental body focused on meeting the needs of its constituents, providing superior customer service, and exhibiting uncompromising financial responsibility. And whereas he played an active and indispensable role guiding the township through a major facility and organizational realignment, which dramatically improved township communication, efficiencies, and cost effectiveness, and whereas he provided key support for the introduction of numerous new and needed township services, including a revised and enhanced food pantry, an expanded senior disabled transportation program, and a new highly impactful township employment center, and whereas he consistently was an advocate for the township taxpayer, you really were, using his extensive management expertise to identify numerous opportunities to reduce costs without degrading township services or performance, and which in turn proved essential in allowing the township to avoid raising taxes every year that he served on the board. And whereas he has a long history of public service, having spent 46 years in the field of public education, the majority of which was in the office of the Cook County Regional Superintendent of Schools as Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, and finally as Superintendent, and whereas he earned the respect and appreciation of the township board and the residents of Elk Grove Township for his unswerving dedication to making the township government more responsive and effective in meeting the needs of its constituents while always maintaining a strict commitment to financial responsibility. Now therefore Supervisor George Bussi and the Elk Grove Township Board does hereby recognize and extend its sincere thanks to Robert Ingraffia for his years of dedicated service, not only as a township trustee, but also as a devoted community leader. Therefore, furthermore, the Board thanks him for the energy, integrity, and honest independence that he brought to his position, which benefited all of those fortunate to have known and worked with him.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. It was excellent, it was excellent having you as a, as a teacher.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Yes, we will miss you.
I'll see you at, uh...
Certainly will.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, this is one of the hardest for me to, Michael Sweeney, please come up. I agonized over this. I had nothing to say. Yeah, thank you, Mike Sweeney. All right, Mike. Michael Sweeney, recognition of superior service, Resolution 2021-04. Whereas Michael Sweeney faithfully served the residents of Elk Grove Township as clerk and supervisor for 16 years, whereas he consistently exhibited an unparalleled commitment to ensuring that Elk Grove Township excelled as a government body meeting the needs of its constituents, providing quality services, and exhibiting uncompromising financial responsibility. And whereas he most, almost single-handedly provided the vision and leadership needed to accomplish the consolidation of multiple township properties and facilities into one location, thus improving staff interaction, increasing the efficiency and effectiveness of township services, and reducing operating costs. And whereas, and as, whereas an additional benefit of this consolidation was the return to, of two former township properties to tax-paying status, and the conversion of another former property into a public park, thus providing tax and quality-of-life benefits for the township residents. And whereas he consistently identified unmet community needs and took the lead in developing effective, fiscally responsible programs to meet these needs, such as an upgraded and expanded food pantry, an expanded senior disability, disabled bus transportation program, and an unemployment assistance center. And whereas he altered a longstanding but largely ineffective social services paradigm by inaugurating a more holistic approach to township social services, focusing not on one-time transactional assistance, but instead on discovering the underlying problems, driving the need for assistance, and then helping individuals solve these problems in order to allow a return to self-reliance and self-worth. And whereas he at all times remained resolutely committed to fiscal responsibility and transparency, and was astonishingly creative and meticulous in identifying cost savings, as well as new opportunities to reduce costs without degrading township services or performance. The elimination of the Township Road District, the trimming of elected official salaries, and the consolidation of township facilities were all key in allowing the township to do more without raising taxes. Whereas his commitment to improving the quality of life for others extended beyond the township by serving as a leader in numerous local community organizations such as the Rotary Club, youth sports, and his church. Now therefore Supervisor George Bussi and the Elk Grove Township Board does hereby recognize and extend its deepest thanks to Michael Sweeney for his years of dedicated service, not only as a township clerk and supervisor, but also as a devoted community leader and advocate. His long-term vision, leadership, and dedication have resulted in accomplishments which will impact the quality of life and well-being of Elk Grove Townships for years to come. Dated 24th May, day of May, 2021.
Thank you. Come back here after you shake everyone's hands.
Thank you, thank you for your service, and thank you for all the service on your departure as well. I appreciate it.
There, congratulations.
Not always a pleasure, most of the time.
Hold on.
Dick, it's your floor.
Yeah, so the Board wanted to present you here with this little plaque, recognition of your service as supervisor. It's gonna be, you know, I've only been on a short time, relatively speaking, but what I've seen and spoken to everybody around the town, everybody's pretty much associated the, you know, the township with you, with, you know, being a supervisor, so I think that's, that's really big, you know, based on all the contributions and everything you made, so we want to present you with this plaque. Thank you.
From us.
Guys, we'll do one with Mike.
Want to do it after the meeting? I'll stick around.
You want to stick around?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it after. Are you guys going to stick around?
Gonna group as policy.
Can I come to your, can I come to your meeting?
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
This is not on the agenda.
No, Mr. Smith. I don't have to call you supervisor anymore, but you didn't like that anyway, but, okay. So, as many of you know that have been here during this whole process of the building, et cetera, Mike had things that he wanted a certain way, and there was symmetry involved.
Yes.
And Mike would look at something three football fields away and say, that's a quarter inch off, we need to fix that. It's not symmetrical. So Izzy and I put our heads together and, and got Mike a little something to remember this project by, and which we'll always remember him by, and it says fondly, "King of symmetry, Michael Sweeney, Supervisor, 2013 to 2021," and it has a ruler on it, so he can keep sure everything is symmetrical. If any of you guys, if any of you guys need to leave, take a picture of now, do you, Bob, you need to get going, or?
Well, then you want to stay. You probably want to stay.
He's glued to his chair.
Art, you okay? Okay.
Can I have two minutes?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you.
If I turn this, are you okay, Kevin? So I can look a little bit more. Okay, I, I've said it a lot, but thank you. Thank you for recognizing myself, thank you for recognizing Bob and Art and all their hard work, thank you for continuing on in your service, I wish you the best over the next four years. And have a little something for, sorry, I'm gonna leave Greg and Vince out because you weren't here when we did the project, but I know you'll understand. A little parting gift, but really it's more of a thank you. We've had, we've had good years, we've had tumultuous years, right, when personalities are involved. One of the things that always, there's a lot of things, but one of the things that brought us all together, I think, was this building. There was a lot of things because, there was a lot of things we worked on, a lot of things that had to come together, all the extra meetings, all the headaches, right, that culminated in us being able to move into this building. And it really, even though, you know, sometimes we disagree, sometimes it got more heated than, sometimes more heated than other times, we came together to finish this project, put our best foot forward, make sure that was, this was planned out, and as George said, that we're looking towards the future, and this building is going to serve the township well. So to commemorate that, not only moving into this building, but also your hard work to make it a reality, just wanted to say thank you.
Each of you want to do? Mr. Keenly.
Oh, wow.
The one for each of us.
Probably a little smaller. Okay, that's awesome. If you hold down.
Thank you.
I have something to put in my...
Thanks for that. This is the new, of the new building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Art Nierdowski.
Ms. Sue Ellen.
Ms. Sue Ellen, I feel like I'm in school. Oh, this is very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very cool.
George.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all for all the hard work.
Very nice, thank you.
For all of you, for all of you watching in, Mike gave us a framed, a frame with three pictures, front of Elk Grove Township, the town hall here, and the food pantry with a nice inscription on it, and like I said before, yes, we all were involved in developing the, the idea and following through on it, but I have to say that the vision, Mike and I sat down, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, myself and Mike and Greg O'Brien, and we had a brainstorming session, and Mike, one of Mike's ideas was really to bring the township together, to put our, two of our properties back on the tax roll, get, to get the other one out to the, into the public in some way for public use, and bring us together as a township to work as one group in a more cost-effective and better communication way. And so this building, in a lot of ways, is due to his vision, and his hard work, and his persistence, and, and, and I, while I appreciate these, really the bulk of the thanks for this building and to the, for the township is Mike. So thank you, Mike.
All right, so we'll go on with the meeting now. If everyone saw the minutes, if everyone had a chance to look through the minutes, if you have, there's minutes from April 26, 21, and May 17, 21. If there's no issues with them, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. We'll do a voice vote here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes. All right, now we'll go to, there's no presentations, we'll go to the reports, if we have the assessor.
Do you have my written report? I would like to highlight the fact that in this, in the statistical report, over 1,400 permits were filed in the last 30 days. The reason that that number is so high is that we were waiting to go online so that we could input these directly into the county mainframe, so we had backlog back until October of last year. We've contacted all of the municipalities requesting that their permits be submitted to us every Tuesday, by request of the county, from the standpoint that there would be times that we would get a bulk mailing of permits, you know, for a six or eight-month period from the municipalities. When we got toward the end of the year, this had the potential of being extremely detrimental to them as far as having a total equalized assessed value for property tax reasons, so I wrote a letter, it was distributed, and so far, we're on target, and we're getting those permits in in a timely fashion, so that's the good news. Secondarily, working with Board of Review Commissioner Tammy Went, we're having an outreach program on... Either seeing or hearing. If it's seeing, I don't have a problem with it.
We can see you.
June 8, we are participating with Board of Review Commissioner Tammy Went in an outreach program with two other townships to give an overview on how to successfully file a assessed value complaint at the Board of Review. Now, this, because we're still in various protocols, will be a Zoom meeting, so if there's anyone watching this now, or any of the board members who would like to participate, please call my office, we will give you the information for registration so that you can participate in the Zoom meeting. From that standpoint, I think it would be beneficial for you to at least be able to recognize Commissioner Went. We had a long and tremendously successful relationship with former Commissioner Dan Patlack, and obviously Commissioner Went has extended herself, and hopefully will have a very good relationship with her. So I pass that on to you, that would be June 8, but if you'd like to register, and it is something you do have to register for, please call my office.
Thank you, Connie. Sue Ellen?
There were no FOIA requests or filings this month. The only thing I have is required trainings for elected officials. Trustee Wotecki and Trustee Dante need to take open meetings at training with the Illinois Attorney General's website, but the website is down, so I will let you know when it's up again. And then all the elected officials need to take the annual sexual harassment training, and Paul has a PowerPoint video training that you can either take in the office or get a thumb drive and take it home and do it. When you do these trainings, just make sure if there's a certificate at the end to print them out and bring them to the office so they can keep track of all the trainings.
Okay, is there any questions for Sue Ellen? All right, then this is supervisors, just, just a couple of quick comments. One, we still are in discussions with the Village of Elk Grove regarding the completion of the remediation of property on the north side, and once that gets resolved and we can get in and begin the remediation, then the, then we'll be able to move ahead with the bike safety and the challenge course, but until that's resolved, we will, we, the bike safety and challenge course are on hold at this particular stage, until we get through that process and get a NFR, no further remediation required. I've also been in the process of meeting with the department heads, and to get a little bit of idea of their thinking, some of their ideas, once I get through that process, then Paul and I'll sit down and kind of go through those and come, come out with kind of our thoughts. Most of these are operational issues, some which can be brought to the board, others that don't need to be, but, so we're, we're in that process right now. That's about all I have, is anybody got any questions for me? Okay, if not, then we'll, is there a motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
I'll sec, I'll second it. And it's a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. No correspondence, and no old business, we'll go to new business, and we have in the package here a reconfirmation of Administrator Paul Piyok, our Administrator for Deputy Clerk and FOIA Officer, the Freedom of Information Act Officer, and we're doing this out of a overabundance of caution. He has been the Deputy Clerk, he has been the FOIA Officer, but with a new clerk in, we decided to just reconfirm his position there. Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Second, Vince? Okay.
Who was the first, I'm sorry?
Dale.
Dale, okay.
All right, if there, if there, if there's no further discussion, is there, I have a motion to, I'm like, you know, we have motion to approve, I have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Then Resolution 2020-08-R, it's a, it's a amendment of our holiday office closing for 2021. There's been numerous requests to reconsider the, the holiday schedule, and I, in talking with Administrator Piyok, have decided that would be appropriate to add to the holiday schedule one day, which would be the, the Monday following the 4th of July, which is, with 4th of July falling on a weekend, the, the normal process in private sector and government sectors to have that Monday as, as a holiday. That's the only change. Is there, is there, is there a motion to approve that?
Yeah, but for that, could we, could we discuss maybe like the Christmas, the Christmas Eve?
Yeah, let's, I guess what we do is, it's, we'll get a motion first and a second, then we open it to discussion.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second?
Aye.
Okay, is there a, is, let's open up for discussion. Dick?
Yeah, I just thought with, because the Christmas Eve is on a Friday, we're only open for a half a day, I thought it would be, to give, give them the whole day off. I thought that the only services that really were, would be important or used, I guess, would be like the food pantry, for example, but the food pantry is not open on Friday anyway, so it's not, you know, they wouldn't be able to, residents wouldn't be able to use a food pantry anyway. So I thought, was there, would be any objection to having the Christmas Eve off also as a holiday?
I think what Dick is talking about is that Christmas Eve, right now is a, is a, is, they're getting, the staff is getting the afternoon off, there is, the morning is a, is a, is a work morning. I think they get off, what, at 12 o'clock, Paul?
12:30.
What time they, 12:30?
Yeah, it's, uh...
12:30.
Nine to 12:30.
Nine to 12:30. I had not included that in here because I felt that that's something that we could, I would, we'd look at for next year, but if there's, obviously if there's an, an interest or a, or a desire to make that a full day, that can be done as well. Is there any further discussion on that?
I would like to also make it a full day.
Make it a full day, it's not a half day, but a full day.
Me as well.
Full day off.
Okay, if that's what I would need, if that's, if that is desired, I need a, a motion to amend the, amend the initial motion to include that Christmas Eve is a full day and not as a half day.
So I'd like, so, so I do, make a...
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion then, that we, we make the Christmas Eve, December 24th, a full day.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and is there any further discussion on that? We'll take a motion, we'll take a vote on the amendment then, right? All in favor of adding to the, to the, to the revise, the Resolution 2020-08 revised, that Christmas Eve be a full day, not a half day? Please say, please, let's be a voice vote, see, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we'd, we will go, if there's any further discussion on the current resolution, which includes the July 4th, the 5th being, we've been given as a holiday, and then the full day on Christmas Eve, if there's, the motion and the second's already been made, and is there a, is there, I guess, is there any further discussion on, on that amended motion? Or do I have to take, I guess I have to, do I have to go, Mike, with the, ask for a motion on the amended one now, the total one? No?
I haven't amended it. You've already had it.
I already, I already had the, I already had it, yeah. Okay, so none of the motions on the amended, on the amended motion. So at that point, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes. Okay, now we're going into two financial issues, or two, three financial items, the transfer of appropriations and town fund and general assistance, there is no need for this in the road and bridge. This is for appropriations for a last fiscal year. We had a, some of the line items, we were over budget, and we have the ability to transfer funds from the under-budget line items to the over-budget items to balance, to balance them, and we have the ability to do that in a total amount for each fund, about 10%. This is nowhere near that. So what we're doing is road and bridge is zero, the, the general assistance, we're, we're moving, we're moving 11,000, and, yeah, and then, and we're, then we're also, then we're, we're also moving, you're moving some to 80,000. then we're also, then we're, we're also moving, you're moving some to 88,000 in the town fund, and we're moving 11,000 in the GO, the general assistance fund, nothing in the road and bridge. So you have the information in front of you. Are there, are there any question in these transfers of appropriations to balance out the line items? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So approved.
You made, Vince made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Newerdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Woteke?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right, now to 2021 tentative budget for town fund and GA amendment. We, we needed to rebudget because we had approximately $960,000 in additional costs associated with change orders, largely, largely coming from issues with the building that we were not made aware of when we, when we acquired it. So we had, we had a fix like leaking power pipes, sump pump, new boilers, and, and, and the likes. So this is a, an adjustment to the budget so that we are reflecting a budget that, that shows the actual, the actual costs of what we spent. And that will be the, this would be for the 2021 budget, tentative budget for town fund and GA. And this is just a tentative, we'll have to go, we have to go through the full, full process. So we'll be going tentative, then we'll be going... Then the final. So for today, we're just, we're just approving the tentative budget. If there's any discussions, questions after that, certainly can talk to me. And then we'll approve the, the final budget at the next, we'll find, final resby budget at the next board meeting. So is there a motion to approve the 2020-21 tentative budget for the town fund and the GA as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Newerdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Woteke?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Now, the last item is a 2021 tentative budget for Road District, once again amended. This is because of the paving project we had. What we do is when we, when we, when we issue the bid, we do retain a percentage of that bid amount until the project is completely finished. It's held, it's held in escrow sort of like, until the project is totally finished, and then it's paid out. Well, it was budgeted to be paid out in the 19, the 2019, 2020 timeframe fiscal year. Instead, the project was delayed a little bit, and, and the completion was, was not until 2021 when that amount was paid out. So you had approximately more in 2021 versus what we, the under, what was underpaid in 20, in 19, 2019, 2020. So we are, we're increasing, this, this tentative budget increases the, that budget by about 93,000 to handle this unique, sort of unique situation associated with the paving project. Is there any further discussion on that? Does anybody have any questions? Once again, you have the paperwork in front of you. This is the tentative, not the final. Final will be voted on at the next meeting. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Is that Vince?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Newerdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee Woteke?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right, there's no executive session matters. I don't believe there's any further business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion's, I mean, the meeting's adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.